Which is great. Thank you, Jess. We appreciate that. Welcome everyone to the Early Learning Advisory Council Executive Session. Today's course is May ninth. And as you're all aware, this is a report development session. So something a little new, a little different unless you were participating in the temporary licensing subcommittee. Process. Here's a few virtual meeting protocols. Of course, you're probably all very aware of how this works. Should you have a question? It would be helpful if you raised your hand. That way we have a chance to grab you or the presenter has a chance to ask your question. We'll make sure and do our best to get to everybody as as you have questions. And throughout the meeting, please meet yourself if you can. And at the end, we'll get into a lot of Q and A. So there should be lots of opportunities to get some information from today. And welcome Emily. I saw you sneak in. Glad to have you. And Hi there. If you have any questions or technical difficulties, of course, you can reach us in the chat box. Or you can send us an email to the one listed below, and I'm sure Jess or somebody can get back to you quickly that way. Thank you. Okay, so we do have about fifteen minutes or so until Nicole is going to be here for a presentation. So we have a little time to to fill. And what I'd like to do is since we do have the time, why don't we do this verbally? For those that are comfortable with sharing your name where you're located. You may do so verbally, or if you're more comfortable. Doing that in chat, that is fine. So how about Emily? You're the first on my screen. You might be new to the group. Maybe if you could introduce yourself where you're located.
Yeah, hi, everyone. I'm trying to come off camera. I'm not sure. I'm still learning Zoom, so forgive me. Um, so my name is Emily Grossman, and I'm the new deputy for Community Engagement at DCYF. I've been on the job for about three weeks, and I came from the Department of Commerce where I did a lot of community engagement work around housing and homelessness and poverty reduction and digital equity and a bunch of other stuff. So I'm really excited to join DCYF and work with you all. And thanks for having me.
Thank you, Emily. How about I will kick it over to Lisa and then Lisa after that, if you'd like to grab someone and ask them to introduce yourself. That'd be great. And until we have a chance to get through everybody. So Lisa, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. I'm Lisa Callen. I am a state representative that's appointed to ELAC and excited to be here, be on a session and get to join you. I don't get to do that during sessions. So it's always nice to see you all. I represent the fifth Legislative District. Which starts in Issaquah and goes to Tapas, Nagami Pass. And it's just north of I ninety and goes to just north of Enham Claw. So a big swath of rural and touch of urban in the midst of the district. And I serve as Vice Chair of Capital. I serve on the K twelve Education Committee and also on Human Services, Really Learning. And I'd like to toss it over to Emily.
Morning. I'm Emily Morgan. I am on the DCYF Community Engagement Team. I am in Spokane and my role is Community Engagement Manager. But I'm here with you all today to help you, help facilitate you developing recommendations for the recommendation report. And I see Samantha Masters next. Oh, also, my pronouns are she/her.
Hello, I'm Samantha Masters, and I'm the Early Learning Program Manager at Children's Home Society of Washington in Spokane. But I'm also on the Home Visiting Advisory Committee, and here I'm representing that, the HVAC. And I think that was it. How about Nancy?
Well, I'm Nancy Spurgeon, and I am the Regional Advisor for North Central Washington's Early Learning Coalition. And which is part of the Washington Communities for Children Coalitions. And I will pass it on to someone who doesn't have their camera on. I'll pass it on to Jessica Spencer.
Good morning, everyone. Jessica Spencer. I'm on the Community Engagement Team, and I am in Tri-Cities, Richland, Washington. And I will pass it to Jamie, if you haven't already gone.
Hi, I am Jamie McLaughlin. Sorry to be camera off this morning. I am the King County Early Learning Coalition's Policy and Advocacy Lead, as well as the Bright Sparks Mobilization Coordinator. Thanks for having me. I will go ahead and call on Michelle if she is not gone already.
Hi, everyone. My name is Michelle Perez. She/her pronouns. I'm the Workforce Equity Learning Partner at the City of Seattle, former Quality Recognition Specialist for Early Achievers. And I will pass it on to who hasn't gone, Debbie Carlson. Have you gone?
I think Debbie did her intro in the in the chat.
Yeah, if that's okay, that
Oh, absolutely. You betcha. How about myself, since I'm hogging up the space here? My name is Eric LaFontaine. I use he/him pronouns. I am on the Community Engagement Team as a manager here with DCYF, and I am here to help facilitate this great conversation. And Senator Wilson?
We're fifty minutes late. Senator Wilson, representing the thirtieth Legislative District, but also Vice Chair of Early Learning K twelve in the Senate. Happy to be here this morning. I have no idea who has not gone or who shall go next. So I'm gonna let somebody else help me out on that one.
How about I'll help you. How about Enrika?
Yeah, hi, everyone. My name is Enrika Hampton. She/her pronouns. And I serve as the Regional Advisor. Representing the King County Early Learning Coalition. And Eric, I will need your help to figure out who has not gone.
You betcha. Valice, I believe you might be up next.
Sure. Good morning, everybody. I'm Belisa Smith, and I would start early Washington, and we're the State Chapter of the National Start Early Organization, and we do a lot of work supporting specifically home visiting programs, as well as advocate for kids and families across the state. And I'm not sure, Nicole, have you gone?
No. Good morning, everyone. I'm Nicole Rose, Assistant Secretary of Early Learning at the Department of Children, Youth and Families. I use she/her pronouns. I am in Olympia, and I am happy to be with you today to talk about the great things that we've accomplished and will continue to do with Fair Start for Kids Act when we get there. And I also am not sure everyone who has gone. So Emily or Eric, if you could help with that, that would
You bet. I know Kathy, have you had a chance?
I have not. Hi, my name is Kathy Carmen. Thank you. I'm Kathy Carmen, and I am a center owner in the Arlington and Marysville area, technically Smoky Point, North Snohomish County. And I'm also the President of the WCCA, Washington Childcare Centers Association, and I'm here on representing the childcare centers.
Thank you so much, Kathy. I think I saw Erin sneak in, and she might be the last. Erin, if you have your audio ready, we'd love to hear you introduce yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Erin. I am the Community Engagement Administrator on the team, and I'm just popping in to observe today.
Okay, I think we did it. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that. Welcome. It's it's great for you all to take the time and and spend maybe three hours here, having a fantastic conversation on a topic that I'm sure some of you are very familiar with, and maybe some of you might not be real familiar with. And so this will be a great opportunity on to get some education for both of those. Before we dive in, I'd like to just lay out the agenda for today. We're going to begin with a presentation on the Fair Start for Kids Act. It will be a more of a general overall update. And after that, we will take a break. We expect Nicole's presentation, maybe an hour or so, but could go a little longer depending on on conversations and questions. Or shorter, maybe. And then we'll take a quick little break. Followed by the second half of today's session, which is where we're going to really get into the report development side of all this. And later on today, Emily will Emily Morgan will actually be leading that work and that discussion. And then with that, I guess we could, no worries of not getting started a few minutes early. Does anyone have any questions before we begin or anything to share with the group? I think that means everyone's excited. Well, Nicole, I'd like to introduce Assistant Secretary of Early Learning, Nicole Rose. Nicole is here to talk to us on the Fair Start for Kids Act and DCYS spending goals and strategies that have been called out in the legislation. And I do believe Jesse, you were able to put the presentation up for Nicole. Very good. Okay, with that, welcome, Nicole. The floor is yours.
Great. Thank you all. And thanks again for having me here today. And I just want to take a moment and reflect on, again, one of the most historic landmark investments we have seen from the state legislature in early learning and just thank Senator Wilson and Representative Callen for that. And you know, as I reflect on what we were able to put out, a lot of this came from conversations over the last several years, and I think is a true testament to when providers and others are speaking up that you really are heard and you you saw that reflected in this legislation. And so the other thing I'll note is while I am here talking with you today, there is an entire team in our early learning division who has been really integral in implementing these strategies, as well as conversations with ELAC and Provider Supports and others. And so I am going to go over sort of what we aim to do, what we've accomplished, and a little bit about sort of what's ahead. And I might at the end talk a little bit about even what's ahead as we think about some of our decision packages and work in the interim. Because all of that is really aligned to some of these foundational strategies that were put forth in the Fair Start for Kids Act. So as I go along, feel free to put questions in the chat. And I can either address them as we go, or if I think I'm going to get to that in a moment, I'll let you know that as well. So if we want to go to the next slide. So this just is showing you a little bit about what we are going to cover today. The how you can help, you're already doing all of that by being here, and there'll certainly be some time for discussion. On the next slide. This really just sets the vision for our department. And I think, again, as we think about the investments in the early learning space from the Fair Start for Kids Act, it really is supporting all of Washington's children and youth. And we're really thinking about that emotional, physical, academic safety and high-quality space, not only for kids, but their families and community. We know kids and families aren't in existence without sort of that community piece. I think the other thing I'll note is while we think about children and families as at the center of what we're doing, you'll see in the investments in the act that there is a lot of acknowledgement around what is it providers need to support the kids and families that are coming through their doors. So if we want to go to the next slide. So there were multiple investments in this act from childcare to state-funded pre-K to some of our informal settings as well, including home visiting. And we really looked at this continuum of services that we're providing to try and reach all of Washington's children and families. And we know at the same time that we're reaching a small portion of them, and this continues to get us to increasing that accessibility and availability of services. So we'll talk a little bit more in depth today about childcare in particular, around some of the levers we have around co-pays, eligibility, some resources and supports that went to family, friend, and neighbor providers. Talk a little bit about what we've done in state-funded pre-K. And then just an acknowledgement that there was some expansion in home visiting as well. And so, again, that whole continuum from your formal to some of your informal settings. So if we want to go to the next slide. So I just talked a little bit about the fact that we've got some big need here. The following slide is going to show us some numbers. So if you want to go to that next one around the number of children and families that are served, and then really who is eligible for care. And one of the things that I think that's important about looking at some of these numbers is that we really focus in often on that birth-through-five space, which is really important. And one of the things I like to highlight as we do this work is that we have a pretty large school age population as we think about our families that are on accessing subsidy as well. So we want to be mindful of how are we making all of those investments upfront in those earliest years? And then as we think about subsidy and some of those other activities in particular, how are we focusing in on that school age piece as well? So you've got some numbers here, and what I would say as you look at these numbers is that we're serving a small percentage of the population in our formal setting. So we've got an opportunity to be able to do more, and you hear from families and providers around why that's important and why we want to continue to think about expanding some of those populations that are eligible for subsidy. So if we go to the next slide. We know that access to care is a huge challenge, and it is a challenge, in fact, for our childcare providers who are providing care as well. And there was some recognition of that during this last session, as we think about continuing to expand eligibility for childcare providers who are providing great care to our kids and families. So we know costs are high. They're one of the biggest challenges, along with food and housing. Childcare costs can cost more than college tuition. I thought I was outside of that those pieces, and now that I'm thinking about college tuition, I can see how it all comes back around, right? And so we're we've got pretty big costs on on both ends of our kids' lives, that early learning spot and that that secondary education piece. And that can be stressful. It can cause a lot of anxiety and stress. What am I going to be able to pay for? How am I going to choose to pay for that? And we also know that families really want a nurturing environment and well-trained staff. And I know that when my kids were in childcare, that that was really important to me, and that was important to me whether they were in a licensed family home or whether they were in a childcare center. And so we want to think about as families are making those choices, again, how do we make sure that there is choice for families? And how do we make sure that providers have the resources that they need to provide that care? So on the next slide, you really see the focus here. We're going to focus in on families. We focus in on kids, and we focus in on providers. And so as we go through the things that we have accomplished, you'll see that theme continue to be highlighted throughout our conversation this morning. Okay, so if we want to go to the next one. We're going to talk a little bit more about the solution and the things that the Fair Start for Kids Act funded. And so the following slide is around improving affordability. And so as we think about affordability, there are some levers that we had around co-pays. One of the things that was happening previous to the Fair Start for Kids Act is that families may have been eligible for subsidy, but because their co-pays were so high that it wasn't beneficial to them. So prior to the Fair Start for Kids Act, we sometimes had families paying a copayment of upwards of nineteen or twenty percent of their income, and that was forcing some families to make choices about, do I continue to work? Do I can do I? Am I able to pay my copay? Am I going to be able to pay rent this month? And so as we think about the affordability piece, the capping of the co-pays really allowed us then to think about how we could increase eligibility, which I'll talk about in a little bit. But that copayment cap had to happen first before we could increase who was actually eligible for care. And so literally what we have is a family of four pays no more than a hundred and fifteen dollars a month in co-pays if they have a combined income of sixty-four thousand dollars or less per year. And then that same family will pay no more than ninety dollars a month if their combined income was less than fifty-three thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars a year. And we've moved from federal poverty level to state median income, which we think is a bit more reflective of what is happening in our states as we think about eligibility. And so know that those income levels change every year as we get updated state median income numbers. So I talked about we had to improve affordability before we could look at accessibility. And because we were able to cap those co-pays and make that move from federal poverty level to state median income and look at some of that across Ecap and home visiting, the next slide shows how we've been able to improve accessibility in the past couple of years. So we have had eighty-two more hundred families eligible to access subsidy through working connections childcare. And we were able to add over a thousand new pre-K slots through Ecap, and then we have another hundred and eighty-five additional families that are served through seven home visiting programs across the state. And these are numbers that really go from the twenty-one to twenty-three year. So I'll talk about what's coming in the future here in a little bit. But these are some pretty big accomplishments. Given that we had seen some declining caseloads and working connections, and so being able to see that go up, I think, is really powerful. And we always want to be thinking about how we can serve more families. So we're we are making steps to do that. That being said, we know as we center on kids and families that we want to make sure that things are adequately resourced. And in the last couple of years, we also really needed to think about how do we stabilize our providers? And what we already know is a broken childcare market and economy. And so if we go to the next slide, talk a little bit about the ways that we're able to stabilize providers and ways that we're thinking about how does that translate into the resources needed to move forward? I want to acknowledge, as I'm talking about these stabilization dollars that we hear from providers about the need that is still out there. And so these are steps that were taken to make some investments and acknowledge that there are some things that we're going to be doing in the next couple of years that we think will be helpful, such as moving to the True Cost of Care versus the Market Rate Survey. But since twenty-twenty-one, we were able to invest three hundred and over three hundred and sixty million dollars in stabilization funding for providers that continue to keep their doors open during the pandemic and serve children and families. And that was a pretty historic investment and was above and beyond what had happened in the previous years prior. So there'd been some stabilization efforts that had started and a real recognition that those stabilization efforts needed to continue with the passage of the Fair Start for Kids Act. We also heard a lot about access to healthcare, and so we're able to partner with the Washington Benefits Health Exchange to provide some assistance so that there was no monthly premium to access healthcare for providers. One of the things that we found as providers were calling in and working with the navigators is that sometimes they were eligible for some of the other programs that were out there. But we had over six hundred and fifty-two providers that enrolled in the no-cost monthly premium in partnership with the Washington Health Benefits Exchange. And we know that the navigators and others were successful in making that happen. I know I'm kind of jumping around the slide here, but part of that's because I want to talk about things that were happening to really stabilize and then sort of what is it that has happened to make that base a little bit stronger as we think about funding. One of the things that we learned over the several rounds of grant funding that had happened prior to the stabilization grants was really the need for technical assistance, and we're really thankful for the acknowledgement of that in the Fair Start for Kids Act and the budget bills that passed to really say it's important to invest in technical assistance for providers as you're thinking about grants and dollars that are going out the door. And so we were able to do that and did over nine thousand technical assistance sessions for providers across their various grants and did that in twenty-nine different languages. So those were some of the stabilization pieces. And then I'm thinking about how do we then take that and continue to put money back into sort of what I would say sort of the base services or base subsidies. There was the sixteen percent rate enhancement to licensed center providers through working connections. And then a ten percent increase in the Ecap rate for providers. One of the things that we also heard a lot about is the need for mental health consultation. And you saw that show up in a variety of ways, but in in this one, really what we focused in on was there was a doubling of the available available funding for mental health consultation for providers. And so that allowed us to go up to fifteen mental health consultants. Infant and early childhood mental health consultants across the state of Washington. I'm just looking at Lois's question. So any movement to the income being based on area median income instead of federal poverty level to access health insurance, because sometimes staff are turning down raises to stay eligible or don't qualify, even if their wage is a thriving one. You know, that is a great question, Lois, and one that we can pose to our partners at the Washington Health Benefits Exchange. I don't know the answer to that. I know I've heard a couple of places where people want to think about area median income for childcare as well. But we'll be sure to follow up on that one. And I think that does become the challenge, right? So I get a raise, and it should be great, but does that raise mean I'm no longer some eligible for something that's really important? And my raise doesn't make it so that I can actually take on the cost of that. So I will, we'll take that as a follow-up with Health Benefits Exchange. Okay, so I'm I'm going to dive deeper into some more supports for families in a little bit. Or I'm sorry, more supports for providers in a little bit. I want to talk a little bit about supporting families, and if we can go to the next slide. So this is just diving a little bit deeper into some of the things that were done to support families. We saw an increase in access for student parents. So as we looked at sort of broadening that definition of what was allowable in activities for parents going to school, we were able to increase access there. We've expanded eligibility for tribal children to access Ecap. One of the things I'll note is that we are, we have a working definition of that right now and are doing a lot of work with the Office of Tribal Relations and are doing some stakeholder and tribal work around what will the definition of Indian child be for Ecap as we move into the future? We're also, for the first time ever, had grants that went to family, friends, and neighbor providers who provide care for their families, friends, or relatives. And so that was some things that was done to support the families that were making some different choices about the care that they wanted to access over the last couple of years. And then we're just continuing to look at our early achievers, quality recognition, and improvement standards. And think about ways in which those continue to be accessible for families to understand the quality of the provider that they are going to. And on early achievers, I know that they have come to ELAC and Provider Supports and talked about some of that work, but the last couple of years really provided us an opportunity to have conversations with a broader group of providers based on feedback we've received over the years, really use a racial equity and anti-racist lens as we were thinking about sort of what the next phase of early achievers looks like. Okay, so if we go on to talk a little bit about some of the quality elements. We have had some investments that are doing a variety of things, all really in this All really in this cluster of trauma-informed mental health pieces. Inclusive environments and inclusive in a variety of ways. So being culturally responsive, really recognizing that kids and families are coming through our doors, children in particular, sometimes with some more complex needs. And making sure that there are some supports directly in the classroom for that. And then thinking about what is our trauma-informed care work. And so we have granted more than one point seven million dollars. And that's really in the equity grants bucket as we're thinking about what are the culturally responsive learning environments that providers are offering. We have a trauma-informed care manager to work with partners across D C Y F. And I think this is a place where it's really important to highlight as an agency. When we are getting investments and we have the opportunity to do things like trauma-informed care work that we're really thinking about, how do we talk about that across the entire agency? So while we have a trauma-informed care manager who has come on to help us think about what that looks like in the early learning space. That manager is actually pulling together a group across child welfare and juvenile rehabilitation to think about what are our trauma-informed practices across the entire system. Sometimes we may have families who are, we know we have families who are in E cap and maybe involved in out-of-home placement and some of those other services that we offer. And so really trying to think holistically about the work that we're doing at the agency. And as I shared before, we were able to increase the number of infant and early childhood mental health consultants. We still see waiting lists and providers that want to access infant and early childhood mental health consultants. But we are continuing to grow that work. That work is done in partnership with Childcare Aware. So I'm just going to pause there because I feel like I've been doing a lot of talking at and make space to see if there are any questions, thoughts that are coming to mind before I do a little bit of a deeper dive into our childcare stabilization grant work.
Hi Nicole, this is ECs from Launch. I just had a clarifying question because I only caught the end of it. Actually, I have two questions. If you can go back to the last slide. Okay, so adding six new consultants specializing in infant and early childhood mental health. What's the age range? Is that birth to twelve or is that birth to five?
Really focused on birth to five.
Birth to five and why is that again?
That is focused on birth to five because that is tied to participation in early achievers, which at this point in time really has a birth to five component, although with the updated video highlights that providers can send in, there is a school age component as well.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that last part? There's a school age component in what?
So the infant and early childhood mental health consultants is tied to participation in early achievers, which is really focused on birth to five. There is a recognition in the updated early achievers quality recognition process around school age care, but infant and early childhood mental health consultation is tied to those programs that are serving birth to five at this point in time.
Okay, gotcha. And then at the start of your presentation, you mentioned something about I think there was a gap that of kids eligible and how many are served and that we should hone in on that part of that, part of those eligible are school age that was in the Can you repeat that first part for me of the presentation?
Absolutely. So there is a, I would say that there is a gap in supply and demand, right? So there's a gap in those that are eligible and those that are being served. One of the things that I think that it's important to note when we think about working connections childcare is that about forty percent of the children receiving working connections childcare are school age children. So it's really important that we are investing in birth to five. And we need to think about what are the things that we're doing that are supporting school age as well.
All right, thank you.
On Nicole, Debbie has a question in the chat. Where will the BH consultants be located in Washington State?
Yeah, so the infant and early childhood mental health consultants are hired by the regional childcare aware offices. And so they are located across the state in our regional childcare aware offices. And then we do have the trauma-informed care manager at the Department of Children and Families. And so if there are more specifics you're wanting to know about that, just let me know sort of what you're looking for there, Debbie.
Has the person already been hired?
Yeah, they've been on board for some time now.
Okay. I'm looking for examples of how of this professional and what, how things have been changing within D C Y F based on their recommendations. Just try to get a sense of what that means essentially.
Sure. And so some of that is resources and supports that are rolling out to providers. And then we do have a trauma-informed care work group, so I'm happy to provide some follow-up information on that.
Okay, thank you.
And Kathy, I'm gonna get you the exact data source from where those numbers came from on that slide.
It looks like Enrica, you're hand raised.
Yes, thank you, Eric. I'm just in looking at the slide where it's talking about that, the money that's going towards supporting the inclusive environments for children with developmental delays, disabilities and behavioral needs. I was wondering if you could provide some examples of how that is how that's looking on the, on the ground in the different, in different parts of, of the state.
Yeah, and so thanks for the question, Erica. And all of that went out through our Complex Needs Fund. And what we really saw was a lot of the resources for that were, our biggest requests were around staffing. And I can get the fast facts for that and put that in the chat. I know that we really had to prioritize applications. And so they prioritized applications from providers located in childcare deserts. But the biggest things I know that we really saw were staffing and access to adaptive materials. But let me get you, get the updated fast facts on that and drop it in the chat for you.
Great, thank you. And with the staffing, and I'll take a look at, look at the document that you're going to share. Does that also speak to, so it's one thing to add staffing, but is it actually resulting in programs being better able to include children with developmental delays, disabilities, behavioral needs? Or do you not have that level of data at this time?
We do not have that level of data at this time. So the first and second rounds of those just closed in November. And I do not believe we have, have started receiving reports on that yet, but let me double check on that.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to ask also, is there some type of documentation in the similar vein around the impact of bringing on a trauma-informed professional? To D C Y S, D C Y F?
Yeah, so we have the Holding Hope reporting that comes from Childcare Aware. And I can follow up on some of the larger cross-agency work that we're doing. I think one of the things as I'm reflecting on the questions that you all are asking is thinking about just the relative time that has passed, which is a short period of time and how we tell the story of that. And I think as we think about the report and I go back to my team, I want to think about how we can get more information out there about the impacts that we're seeing. Any other questions? Okay. So I think we will go on and I'm going to work to try and get you some of this information as you are together today. So this is just putting in some more detail. The number of grants that were awarded into home as we looked at the childcare stabilization grant. And so you can see the number of licensed and certified providers and the number of family, friend and neighbor providers. And then if they were an E cap licensed site, they were also eligible to receive these funds. And so this is just showing the breakdown of what that looks like. The Early Childhood Equity Grant is the next slide and it is showing the number of applications that we received. One of the things that I would say as we move into the Early Childhood Equity Grant and the Complex Needs Fund is that the, the childcare stabilization grant was meant to really stabilize and think about all those providers that were open and providing care. When we moved into the Early Childhood Equity Grants and the Childcare Complex Needs Funds, those dollars had some more specific criteria. And because of the needs that was out there really were more of what we would consider a competitive grant. Meaning not everybody who applied was going to be able to access this. And so one of the things you'll see is that for early childhood equity grants, I talked about the one point seven million dollars that went out in that first round. We had applications totaling over a hundred million dollars. So you really see a need and a desire to really think about how do I support this in my program? In the second round that will be released soon, we went through a refinement process with community stakeholders and other partners to say, what worked well about this grant? What do we need to do and think differently around the Early Childhood Equity Grant? And so really taking that refinement and implementing that in round two. And I'm going to drop in the chat a link to the refinement document that talks about what changes were made and why the change was made as we went through this next round of grant criteria. And that included changes from sort of who was prioritized. Making sure that there was a grant readiness checklist, providers asked for that. And looking at the categories around the outcomes and changing budget categories. And then also asked us to really look at the minimum amount of grants. And so while we might not always get it right, we're really trying to take time and go back. And when we hear feedback and talk with providers around what would make this next round of grants or whatever it is we're implementing better, and really trying to increase transparency around the feedback that we can take, why we can take it, or if we can't take it, why we can't take it. So we feel like the Early Childhood Equity Grant is a good example of that. So we are, we are learning as we go and really trying to adjust as we go as well. So if we want to go to the next slide.
I have a quick question, just in reading the document quickly. Is there any tracking of providers who are providing services to families that are with foster children within the foster care children or system?
So we know who is, so there's a couple of different ways. We know who is receiving child welfare childcare payments. But other than that, we might not know unless a provider reports to us in some of these grants. If they are serving a child who is in out-of-home placement or involved in the system. So one of the things Debbie that I would say about that is that what we have at the department, unless the child is receiving subsidy, we know the capacity of the provider, but we do not have actual enrollment data at licensed centers or family homes. So we don't track down to the child level unless they're actually receiving subsidy.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, so complex needs, this was another space where we really heard and saw a lot of need. And this was a place where we were able to go back and ask if we could use some, some dollars to put some more funding into childcare complex needs. You can see again here that in that first round, we had requests for over eighty-seven million dollars. In the second round, you see another increase in the request with requests for over a hundred and forty-nine million dollars. And we're extremely thankful that during this last legislative session, there was an increase in equity grants in childcare complex needs. And if we go to the next slide, you'll see that there was also an increase in the E cap complex needs as well. And so in the E cap complex needs, again, this is going directly to the contractor. But you're seeing that the requests that they are having, again, were outstripping the dollars that were available. And so there were some increase made in the E cap complex need arena as well.
Nicole, this has a quick question in the chat.
Yeah, and that is coming probably in the next little bit here. And so I'm going to verify that date. I believe we just put something out saying it was coming soon. So it should be sometime this spring. And so I'm going to see if we can get closer on that date for you. Okay, so one of the, so one of the things I just want to say as we move into sort of what's coming ahead is that huge, huge, huge accomplishments and, and wins and dollars going out to providers. And you see sort of the, how do we think about what this means moving forward? And how do we think about what are the rates, what do those need to be moving forward? And that's where we, I think, have a real opportunity with the cost of care work. So I'll talk a little bit about what to expect in twenty twenty-three, twenty-five on the following slide. So as we go into the next biennium, there are additional slots that we will be adding through E cap. And so there'll be five hundred slots added in each of the next school years in E cap as well as converting a thousand slots per year from part day to school day because we know that dosage matters. And so we're excited to be doing that. Our trauma-informed care awards are being rolled out right now. I'll tell you what those acronyms are. So E cap is our Early Childhood Education and Assistance Program. And then W G Q R is our Workforce Growth and Quality Recognition Unit in the Early Learning Division. And we're working to get all of those trauma-informed care awards out through E cap contracts. Or if you're a licensed childcare provider through Childcare Aware. We have the Dual Language Designation Fund that is open. And that is available for providers who are doing, who are participating in early achievers. And so there is a process by which to submit that in your early achievers coach can help you with that. And then we're continuing to expand Eclipse, which is our therapeutic childcare and specialized treatment. Um. And it is really something that we are layering on top of our E cap services to provide some support to those most in need. We want to go to the next slide. So we have the additional early childhood equity grants that are opening um and or the equity grants that are coming soon. And then we have the additional funding that we we received in twenty three, twenty five. So um we had the five point two million dollar per fiscal year for early childhood equity grants, which we're really excited about. We had additional complex needs grant funding for childcare providers for about nine point seven million awarded per fiscal year. And so that is also great. And then in E cap, there will be an additional um two and a half million in complex needs for fiscal year twenty four and three point two eight million in fiscal year twenty five. Now, as we look at all of these different grants and awards, um and we had an increase um in the childcare subsidy rates to the twenty twenty one market rate survey, which is a huge investment for our childcare providers, we had a rate increase um varying anywhere from, I think, nine to eighteen percent for state funded pre K depending upon the model and type of slot that the provider is offering. I think there's again true acknowledgement of what it costs to provide care. And so there's some really important work that we're going to be doing during the interim where we want to look at some of the questions that you're asking. What's what's the impact we're seeing on the ground? Where are the biggest places we're seeing um requests around funding and complex needs? And how do we think about what really is that true cost of providing high quality care? And there's work that we're doing uh with a design team to really come up with, how do we put forth a model around the true cost of high quality care to the legislature? There's also work around a childcare access and living wage proviso. So um lots of interest and how do we really take a look at the childcare market as a whole? And I really think about it as an opportunity for us to think about um not just how the system works today, but how do we want the system to work in the future? And how do we really think about um expanding access and affordability and keeping that eye to high quality care? So lots of really good things that are happening that Fair Start for Kids Act really sets the foundation for. And then some great investments that have passed at this time. And um equity grant is scheduled to open tomorrow. And so that, so take a look out for that. And then um I did double check and we just closed the first reporting timeline for complex needs. So we're just going through um those results to look at um what we're hearing. And we'll be able to report back out on that. And thanks, Belisa, for putting that in there. Lots of new early learning investments. So with that, I will just say um really, really powerful um to hear from parents and families where things have made a difference for them. And this is just a quote from Jessica Heedner about the impact that the Fair Start for Kids Act has made um in their life. Um. Just as legislative session is ending, we're always thinking about next session. And so we're already thinking about what does it mean for us as we go onto a supplemental session and um you know, I would ask Senator Wilson or Rep. Callen if there's anything you want to say about supplemental or any of this, but we know that there have been so many investments that have been made and also acknowledge that we want to continue to look at that E cap slot rate and continue to look at childcare as a whole um moving forward as we implement some of the things from this session as well and have an eye to the next big session where we'll really get into cost of quality in those pieces.
I I might just add, Nicole, a couple of thoughts came to mind. One is you know, the work around D D and I D um population and that sits sometimes in early learning K twelve, but it also sits in the sphere of human services, which I chair. So when I think about child welfare and the questions around um our kids that are system impacted, that's very much a bigger picture um than just early learning. So it's part of uh the pie and it's for me, I look at it at both sides, how we're serving an early learning K twelve, but also what does that look like for our wraparound services and supports? So that's critically important. Uh. School age care is another one. As we think about that, again, it's all prevention and we traditionally in early learning have thought about birth to five, but our definition of early learning in our state is prenatal to grade three or age eight. So it crosses the system and sectors. And as we think about what's happened in the pandemic, finally, others have understood uh that it is not just about what happens before the kindergarten door, but also how families need support after that, and that these are no longer just poverty programs, which is what they were created to do. And then the last thing I would just say um related to supports for providers is the uh early learning facilities funds, which um Nicole didn't have a chance to speak on, but that really is around facilities and the need not only for new facilities and citing of facilities, but also renovations and um and changes to current facilities. That also answers the question of how we're doing more inclusive uh work and how we're doing a universal design for learning and how we're thinking about that uh pre-kindergarten. So um a lot of money, not only for the dollars, but also for supports um for uh individuals who are awarded grants to help them through the process of permitting and design and all those things that uh we know way more about kids often than we do about buildings. And so how is it that we're successful in the dollars? We do get to leverage those. So those would be just a couple of other additional things. And again, our systems were never meant to get people out of them. They were meant to keep people right where they are. And so much of the disruption is trying to give people what they need to lift up and out. And that's our providers as well as um those that are participating in our programs. And so um and have absolutely valued the work um with Rep. Callen in the house on all things kids and families um from prenatal through, because I think that is our most important work and also our most expensive work. My mantra this session, humans cost a lot of money.
I would like to just add, you know, from uh as vice chair of capital budgets, working really hard to make sure that we're doing historic investments and early learning facilities. Um. So this year we were able to put seventy million dollars towards early learning facilities grants, which is just fabulous. Um. And uh many of those are targeted projects to try to build out um deserts as well as uh build out the equity of who we're serving. Um. And in particular, uh there will be forty two million specifically for grants in this for this biennium. Want to make sure the word's getting out that we've increased the cap just for a one-time biennium increase. Um. I believe it's to two point five million. Normally it's a one million dollar grant cap, but um we've increased that. So if you know of anybody that is interested in trying to get into this next round of um financing and and just make sure that they're uh recognizing and knowing the increase in the the cap availability for delivery funds, that's huge. And then if anybody has any questions, always feel free to reach out to me specifically on the capital stuff. I like to dive deep in that space.
Yeah, and we are excited about the early learning facilities fund. And and just so folks know, that is a partnership with Commerce. Um. And one of the things that we're really looking at as we think about those investments that you all were talking about is what is the technical assistance even needed when applying for the grant? And then as Senator Wilson talked about, once they have the money. So we're doing some looking and thinking there as well around what are some of the uh resources that we need to put in there with an eye to language access also and making sure that it is culturally relevant and responsive TA uh on things that are complex, um you know, CDFI and those types of things are in architecture and not the world I live in. And
So, yeah. For this I was just going to say, Nicole, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the cohort project specifically for awarded winners of um the grant project. So Imagine Institute has been really uh doing wonderful things at helping people with applications, especially with multiple languages. But once the award was happening, um again, that's the space. And so we've got three hundred and fifty thousand that was put in there to support a cohort model of a group of architects, early learning folks um that know both environments inside and outside to help uh through a facilitated collaborative process, which will be really exciting pilot. It was a pilot um in Pierce County and we're now lifting it up to the state to see again how we help support uh folks across the state. So it just aligns so well with the work that Rep. Callen has done and that Capitol Committee has done to put money toward this. Um. And again, now we need to make sure we leverage every dime um and make those spaces and places the best we can for kids in our communities.
Does anyone else have any questions for Nicole while we have her here? Okay, well, uh Nicole, thank you. Uh. This has been great. I think that a lot of the participants really gain a depth of information of of all the different ways that that you all have been hard at work with related to this legislation. So um, thank you. And thank you, Senator Wilson, for your hard work. Um. We're a little short on time. I guess this may be a good opportunity for us to take a quick break. Um. Unless anyone would like to add any additional questions? Okay, well, how about we will take a, I think we have fifteen minute break on the agenda. Is that correct? Let me look.
It was ten minutes, but it was ten thirty. So we are had a schedule. So I think uh do do we want to do fifteen or ten minutes? How's the group feeling? Ten? Yeah, let's let's just do ten and then we can jump into the discussion.
Okay, great. Um. We'll take a ten minute break and we will see you all back here at ten seventeen.
Okay, it is ten seventeen, so we can go ahead and slowly get started in case some people are a little slow to come back from break. Um. For the rest of the meeting, we are going to brainstorm what additional information you guys need to make recommendations. And then um if there are any initial recommendations that have come to mind, we'll discuss those too. Um. But I wanted to start out to see, is there anybody here who is not a member of ELAC who doesn't uh get these invites regularly? If so, we want to, if you're willing, we want to have your email address so we can keep you updated on um when these meetings are happening. So if there is anybody who doesn't get the ELAC invites, please feel free to put your email in the chat or um you can private message either myself, Eric, or Jessica Spencer, and we'll make sure you're added to um the distribution list for this uh FSKA recommendation report. Okay, so I will share my screen then. Can you guys see my screen? It's looking a little weird on my end. Oh, yeah. Okay, perfect. Okay, so based on that conversation, a presentation from Nicole, some things that I kind of heard, I heard a question on the um area median income instead of federal poverty level. And I know Nicole is going to get back to us on that. Um. But I also kind of heard maybe something that we can discuss is how the public, how you guys think the public should be updated on Fair Start for Kids Act progress. Um. Sounds like there's a lot, or not a lot, but there's some reports that aren't uh, you know, data and reports that aren't quite quite ready since this legislation is still fairly new. Um. So if anyone has any ideas or recommendations on how um how the public should be updated on FSKA, I think that um is something that might be some good recommendations. Um. Also, on the question that Lois asked about um insurance and um AMI and FPL, uh I saw your comment, staff sometimes turn down raises to ensure they stay eligible or don't qualify, even if their wage is a thriving one. Shift income from federal poverty level to area median income. Is that something you'd like to have as a recommendation? Not sure if Lois is still here in my
Yep, I'm still here. Just had to unmute. And yeah, that is definitely a recommendation.
Okay.
Um. And then um the other piece too during our executive call yesterday, um I did share out about the importance of having a space on maybe the FSKA homepage um where the document is there that shows the progress where people don't have to dig through the ELAC meeting notes um to be able to see, find that update on what's been completed, what's in process and where we stand with all the recommendations. I want to make sure that's there. So those are actually two.
Oh, sorry. Can you, what was the last thing you said and how?
Where we are, on the recommendations, where we are, uh what's been implemented, what won't be implemented and why? And um you know, what the process is and even maybe even the timeline of folk, even if the department knows, like when say um background tech fees, we know that went through, that was something that was recommended. So that could be something that stamped um that it's completed, but you know, ongoing because we have to make sure it's included in budget every year, something like that.
Okay, um. And you're talking about the TLS tracker, but I'm assuming also then tracking the recommendations that come out of this report. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
All the above. Mm hmm. So something similar I should have said. So thank you for that clarification.
Makes sense. Thank you. Add this over to the recommendation. Okay. Are there any other initial recommendations that have that that came to mind when you were listening to Nicole's presentation or um, you know, between the last ELAC meeting and now? Debbie, go ahead.
I was going to recommend, it was it was mentioned um around uh the efforts around wage equity within the early learning sector. Um. I think my recommendation is to similar to Lois, make it really easy and tease it like tease it out, like what is being done um to to address wage inequity within the early learning sector and what are the steps that have been taken? And if, who's the audience of this, by the way?
This, a good question. This report is, the actual legislation says, provide recommendations annually to the governor and the legislator. So the audience is the governor and the legislator. Their report does go to DCYF first um. And then it is disseminated to the governor and the legislator, but that's the audience.
I would then, even with that, those um communities as an audience um write some analysis briefly on why wage equity is important. Like, for example, oh, like in Snohomish, um we have, we have empty slots because we um are we are unable to find educators who can afford to um work as an early learning educator because of wage inequity. And so the, you know, the direct impact to families and communities And so the, you know, the direct impact to families and communities when wages are still low in various areas around the state.
Thank you. See, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble seeing the raising hand and my screen, so.
I got the hand.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Debbie, it looks like you have your hand raised.
Apologies, I forgot to lower it.
I think I saw another hand, but it went away.
It was Senator Wilson. I was just going to say, just FYI, Debbie, there is a budget proviso that just came through. That was something that Nicole, I don't think that we mentioned, but around pulling all the different models together and the folks that have been part of the childcare collaborative task force and the design group that was happening through Childcare Aware and Childcare Resources and to actually come together as a group to kind of put forth what that compensation package is going to look like, just saying. And I see Nicole popping on, but clearly totally so important. And I'm just going to stick my nose in and say the reason we passed, for me, fifty-two twenty-five to pay for the cost of care for employees in childcare and the health care issues and the licensing and the background check piece was while we were coming up with a compensation package, what else could we do that would actually increase disposable income back in the hands of providers while we were creating the other piece, which we know is, has to happen, as you said. So I'll shut up. So, but that is something that with the governor is in the budget and that will be moving forward over this short session. So just an FYI.
Debbie?
Hi. So this is a minor thing, but Senator Wilson reminded me of the, the five-two-two-five bill that was so critical for our childcare staff. And that the copay calculation tables that have to do with SMI differ between E cap and the working connections. And I don't know, no one's been able to answer for me why they differ. What, are they looking at different years? We had staff looking at the E cap copay table that came out, or not copay, calculation table to see if they're eligible. They came out in February thinking that they would qualify and then found the working connections one that comes, came out in April saying, huh, maybe they won't qualify. Because it's different. And the working connections one is less. So I'm just wondering if we should, could streamline that somehow, make it where that all of the statement of incomes that we're looking at for calculations for whatever we're looking at, they're the same.
Emily, if we can update, it's not the co-pays, it's the income eligibility.
Income eligibility. Yeah, I was looking at the compay chart. Thank you.
Because we've, and we'll, we'll go back and look at that. And right now they are at different income eligibility levels. So for E cap, it can be it's thirty-six percent state median income and working connections is up to sixty percent state median income. And so I'm wondering if that is the basis for the difference, but we can take a look at those.
Yeah, but if you compare them side by side, the percentages that are the same that show on both tables, they are different amounts. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy and Enrica. You have your hand raised.
Yes, thank you, Eric. Just wanted to expand on something that Debbie was sharing in her response. You know, given that this is the audience of this report are governors and legislators, what I think would be really helpful is to make sure throughout the report that we're giving, you know, snapshots or concrete examples of what does all of this look like on the ground? You know, so, you know, giving really specific examples, highlighting what, not only what are the issues that are happening on the ground in different parts of Washington State, but also highlighting, you know, are, are some of these strategies working? Why are they working in some areas? Why aren't they working in others? Just so that, you know, you're getting a real true picture of, of, of the work versus, versus staying at a very high level.
Thank you, Enrique. Is there anything that comes to mind about additional information that you need to be able to to develop these recommendations? I know at the last meeting it was mentioned that you guys want to see, you know, you need some information on where DCYF is on some of these strategies. Nicole shared a little bit about that today. Eric and I are working to get you guys some more updates so that will either come via writing in between meetings or potentially at the next report development meeting. But is there any, anything else that comes to mind? I also meant to add at the beginning of this section that we definitely understand that this is a short turnaround for this first report and that it might not be all encompassing of everything you guys want to recommend, but this is an annual report. So the legislation says beginning August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and annually, so this will be the first one. And then, you know, September first, twenty-twenty-three, we can already start working on the, the next report. So this definitely doesn't have to be all encompassing. I don't want anybody to feel rushed, even though I know it is kind of a rushed timeline. I see from Michelle sharing real stories illustrating how these changes have positively impacted providers, children, and families. Thank you, Michelle. I'm putting those kind of in the middle in yellow since they're not exactly recommendations, but more how you guys want the report to be structured. If I'm getting anything wrong, please interrupt me and I will fix it.
During Nicole's presentation, she made reference to something that I took note of, where she, she talked about how, how do you want childcare to look like in the future? So as I thought about that question and I thought of the, the presentation and then the opportunity to actually get into recommendations, I wanted to ask the group or anyone that would like to share. It's a very open-ended question. I think it can go a hundred different ways, but if anyone would like to share what they would like to see childcare look like in the future? Lois?
So the one thing that I think about, if we talk about what we want childcare to look like in the future, one would be more funded mandates as opposed to unfunded? That's number one. Number two would be assistance for programs whether they are private or with the majority private or working connections families. Because, you know, at the end of the day, and I'm, yes, I'm, I'm thinking about my center because we our neighborhood transitioned, so our children transitioned as families that were low income could no longer afford to stay in the neighborhood, whether it's rents or grandmother's house got sold or whatever the case may be. So your clientele changes, but you know, we're, it's still a center that's in need of help. And I can think of several other centers that have that same issue that are in gentrified neighborhoods. So moving from just oh, we need to help centers that are predominantly working connections children to being able to find a way to support all centers, because at the end of the day, it's all of our children. And and they all need to be able to have access to quality care.
That was very well said. Thank you, Lois.
And if I may add, you know, staff still deserve a thriving wage. There's this assumption that because I'm thinking of even centers on the east side, they may end up charging more, but staff still may not receive a thriving wage because, you know, rent might be higher. Property taxes might be higher. There are so many other things that go into running a small business that that's more than just looking at a per child amount, which is the way a lot of people like, oh, you charge this much per child, but they don't think about our insurance doubling or tripling or property taxes or being able, our healthcare benefit costs going up or L and I, and I could go on and on. And I see, you know, I see some folk nodding, so I just want to just point that out.
Thanks, Lois. Debbie?
On, on those lines, I, I would definitely like to see a a living, a workforce that receives a living wage and that receives professional development opportunities that are accessible and affordable. I would like to also see more integration with families of what is early learning? What does it look like? Why is it important? That education to be accessible, really to all human beings, whether they have children or not, but understanding what it is. And a more integrated connection and alignment between DCYF and OSPI around the continuation of education of children from zero, zero to five to K through twelve. And really encouraging these two educational systems to collaborate. More.
Thanks, Debbie. Lois, did you have something else?
I just wanted to have Debbie's permission to see if we can change that from living to thriving, because when I think of a living wage, I think about just simply being able to buy food and pay your rent. But I would love a thriving wage means that you might be able to take your children on vacation. You know, and do some of the other things that make for and a well-rounded family life. So if, with Debbie's permission, if we could.
Absolutely. Thank you. I love it.
Okay, I want to go back to the concrete examples of what the impacts of FSKA look like on the ground in Washington State. Do, does anybody have any suggestions? Obviously, we can gather, you know, data from our internal sources, but does anybody have any suggestions or thoughts about where these examples will come from? Like, are you, do you envision you guys as providers or learning professionals bringing some examples? Or is that something that you would like community engagement staff to work on in between meetings? We can also always ask the parent advisory group if they have any any input.
Emily, I would just say as a, as a legislator, providers are pretty connected in at least their voices and stories they brought to the legislature related to bills and whether that's through individual groups or whether that's through the Washington, you know, the childcare group. Lois, you know, there's, so I don't know, I, I believe there's a quite an active a group of stakeholders I know that were engaged and have been engaged. So I, I think I mean, that's the most important thing is stories. I think they've done a great job at doing that and we need to continue to do that. Because I think in committee is the only place that you hear the stories, right? So as a committee, there have been wonderful stories that have been brought forward, good, bad, or indifferent about the impact legislation has had. And I think this would then bring those same stories up to a much broader audience to read the full legislature as opposed to just committee members who hear those things. But Lois, I mean, I think, do you not agree? It's really putting a word out in the provider network and also parents would be the other piece, parent ambassadors. There's lots of different parenting groups that have been engaged in this that I think would also give voice. So it's just, yeah.
Thank you, Senator Wilson. Yes, I do agree. And I also think another group too would be Childcare Aware Washington as they're doing their work around around wage, worthy, worthy wage efforts and that type of thing. And so as they're building their coalition, they received money from Ballmer and some other foundations to do this work. So they would be a great group to partner with. So thank you, Senator Wilson.
Thank you both. Enrique?
Yes, just adding to, to this, I also think that, you know, like Washington Communities for Children are, are going through coalitions can also be a way to get, get voice and get on the ground perspectives.
Thank you, Enrique. Are there any other thoughts around that?
Head Start E Cap Association too would be a great for Parent Voice and just thinking about comprehensive pre-K programs as well as our childcare and state-funded, because many of them are kind of blended and land in both of those kind of worlds. So another group, especially Parent Voice.
Thank you.
And then I'm also thinking like Imagine and Voices of Tomorrow would be some other good ones as well as, you know, of course, I'd imagine nine-two-five is automatically on there, but I'm just thinking about the great work the family childcare providers did on making their voices heard about the HOA bill that was passed. So that would be another group.
Thank you. And I see Michelle's suggestion in the chat to share a survey link on social media for folks to submit their stories. It's a great idea. We can always come back as, as ideas pop up too, but while there's a little gap, do you guys have any input on how you would like to spend the next couple meetings? So we have, we have today until noon, so a little over an hour left. May, we have, is it an hour of the Dune Meeting? Is that right? May, we have, is it an hour of the June meeting? Is that right, Eric?
Yeah.
Okay, we have an hour of the June ELAC meeting for the executive session, which we'll be working on this report development. We have three hours in July and then one hour in August, and then the report will be due the end of August. So we really only have four meetings left and two of those are only an hour long. So I'm curious if you would like with the work that Eric and I are going to do to get you guys some information on where ELAC is on, or I'm sorry, where DCYF is on certain FSKA efforts. Would you like us to look into bringing bringing program staff to present at any of these meetings? Or do you want the information to come in a written form? I kind of didn't word that that well. So let me know if you want me to explain that better. I guess I'm just trying to figure out where, how we can best use the time together. Do you want to hear some information from DCYF and then brainstorm and do the report development? Or would you rather the information moving forward come in a written form? I see Debbie's comment in the chat, Washington Communities for Children as a thriving statewide network of early learning sector professionals as well as parents. And we have a childcare statewide network that also worked heavily on HB 1199. So Debbie, that's another resource to tap into for stories. And yeah, okay, great. Thank you. I can tell you on our end, we were kind of thinking for the meetings where we only have an hour that we would definitely just do report development. But maybe at our July meeting, we could have some more program staff come and speak to anything that is a little more in the weeds than what Eric and I could explain. Does that sound okay? We want this to be your guys' report. So I don't want you to feel, yeah, I see some thumbs up. Okay, so for the hour meetings, we'll just do some report development. But then when we have a little bit longer, we might be able to bring in some DCYF staff to go a little more in depth. Kathy, go ahead.
Hi, I'm thinking that maybe I need some clarification on one part of the Fair Start for Kids Act. It's section 312, and it is about the negotiated rulemaking with childcare centers. And the one liner that concerns me is it states when the secretary elects to engage in negotiated rulemaking pursuant to the RCW that's attached to that. And I guess as a childcare center owner and responsibility to share what the needs seem to be across the state. I feel like that that requirement to be more like required as opposed to when he elects or when someone, when the secretary elects to negotiate with about rulemaking changes, because this past year there were some things that were rules that were changed. And yes, it went through the official proper process. It was disclosed. It was shared in emails for those that received the emails. It wasn't noticed because of the timing of it by a lot of people. And then all of a sudden, there's a rule that impacts people where we would have wanted to maybe share and have some discussion prior to it being fully enforced. So I guess I wanted to know, I don't know if Senator Wilson can clarify, was the intent of, of that section to actually create more dialogue in advance of rulemaking and to try to make stakeholders be involved in the process in advance? Was that the intent?
I think the intent is to say that rulemaking, you know, I don't think you want rulemaking around every single thing. So I'm not going to be able to answer legislatively what is an operational piece. Because legislatively, rulemaking is something that has to happen. But I look at it kind of the nexus of, I look at it in hourglass, right? And I am responsible for the legislation and the pieces above. And then when we think about the secretary or whoever's in charge of the agency, the purview from them is the agency below. And my, my piece as a legislator is to ask and to get feedback on implementation and how things move forward. So I can tell you the, for me, intent always is to have voice. But how that happens or whether, you know, I think that's a conversation. I think that's an ongoing conversation, but that's really operational more than it is legislative. So if there, because again, a requirement would be for every single thing. Every single thing you would have to do that. And that I don't think is the intent either. So I don't know, Kathy, if that gives you an answer. I think it's also too just around the fact of who are, who an agency represent and represents and how many voices it has to take into account when they're making decisions. So because you have the conversation and you have input doesn't always mean also that things move that direction, as you well know, the direction sometimes we want it to go. But I think, you know, the question is, is there opportunity for input? And how does that look? And then how is that input utilized? So and that's something, again, I'm new enough too, where I am still just getting solid on my role. And, and I am not, I'm not a user of the system. And so I know that there's that lens there as well, and we could talk more about it. I'd love to do that, but you know, intent always is that lived experience and voice needs to play a role in how things move forward and how things play out as much as can be done.
Thank you.
And Nicole may have something totally separate to.
Thank you for that clarification. I guess in my mind, if there's a whole new WAC being established around this topic that that would should, I would think promote that dialogue to occur or start that dialogue in advance of public hearings.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and I guess, and again, I need to learn too about where is the, where does it, where is that space? Where, where does that happen? And I would agree with you. You don't change a whole bunch of things without getting that input. But I don't know what the nexus is and where that is and what creates that lever that says it's now, you know, public meeting for rulemaking dialogue. And that's a learning piece for me as well. I'll dig some more.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And Kathy, I just wanted to let you know, I heard that and that we are talking about just our rules process overall at the agency and negotiated rulemaking and even thinking about it beyond early learning. And so took all of that in and certainly hear the desire there. And we'll work with Eric and team to provide an update on where we're at with that process when we have it.
Thank you, Nicole.
And we still have about an hour left. Based off of what I've seen so far between today and the next time we meet, so the June ELAC meeting, I'm not that I don't have the date off the top of my head. We will, the community engagement team, we can do some reaching out to these groups that you talked of, that you shared for parent input. We have a, we have a PAG meeting in May and then not again till July. So we can bring it up at the July meeting. Because our main meeting, the agenda is set. So we'll reach out to these groups. We can look into doing a survey for social media to start collecting survey or stories. Are there any other, other than what's been shared? Are there any other steps that you would like us, the community engagement team, to take before we gather next to work on this? Yes, Enrica?
Thank you. I was just actually thinking of another group that you might consider reaching out to. And I'm thinking about the State Interagency Coordinating Council, SICC. And what I'm thinking about is trying to get voices of families who have children with disabilities, developmental delays, healthcare needs, and hearing about, you know, their experiences if they're trying to, for example, access, you know, child, you know, childcare. And how have these, the, you know, what we're trying to put in place, how has that been? What's been their experience? They're on, so getting the voices in that way. And so, you know, going through SICC, thinking about early support agencies, also referred to as early intervention. Yes, thank you, Senator Wilson, for that as well. So just trying to make sure that we are not missing the voices of families that have children with developmental delays, disabilities in our processes.
Thank you, Enrica. That's a good call out. Open doors for multicultural families. Thank you. Would you, if we, I guess the survey would probably just be, you know, kind of simple questions about parent experience, but is that something that you would like us to send out to this group before we post it to social media? Or reach out to these groups? I just want to check in on how involved you guys want to be on the front end of that. Reaching out.
What is your timeline on posting it to social media?
It can be posted to social media pretty quickly. The longer timeline would be us creating the survey. So kind of like the, you know, the backend work. And looking into if we needed to do any translation that delays things. But we, our process, we're getting this posted to social media as we reach out to our, our communications consultant, and they can have it posted within a couple of days. So we, we likely, if we get moving on it, could have at least some report backs ready at the June meeting, depending on, I don't want to make any promises on that, but it's not, it's not a long process unless we are getting translation. So for some of, some of these groups, we might want to look into doing that. Do you, actually, maybe I should just ask that to you guys. What languages would you like us to put the service, the survey out in on social media? I can tell you, we use Survey Monkey. And so we would, how it works, you can't just like, if someone's using Google Chrome, I don't know if you guys are familiar, you can change your language on Google Chrome, but that's not a perfect at all. So what we would do is with Survey Monkey, we would create different surveys for each language. And we would go through our contractor to have that, the survey interpreted. So that, that's where the process can kind of take longer. But obviously, you know, we want to be inclusive too. So how do you guys feel about that? Are there any suggestions on what languages you'd like to see the survey come out in?
I'm wondering if we could use data and actually look at the populations for wanting to reach out and see what the top languages are. And I know DCYF has, you know, again, kind of uses a a think when they're kind of deciding what the, what the top languages are. You certainly can't do all, but again, that's why it would be helpful too to reach out, because some of these could be done in a, in a group setting too, if groups got together. That's the other thing I'm thinking. But I, I think so Spanish and Somali, and I know you're going to get some, but not all. So you really depends on depends on who we're wanting to get voice from, I think also. Is it really only two languages, Eric, that most things happen?
For just a gen, for general messages typically.
Okay.
However, a lot of the grant work, when, when we're really looking at, at reaching a much more inclusive audience, they'll actually translate into, I think it's a total of six languages.
Yeah, that's right. Six to eight or something like that usually.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, each of those are definitely options, right? It's not necessarily just specific to the typical ones that they might send out for some messages. But we do have the opportunity to really reach just about any, any language or break any language barrier. And I think it's a good idea to use some data as well. And I think we've got some dashboards that we could possibly access to pull a little bit of this and maybe try to be a little more targeted with, with the survey. Oh, thank you, Michelle. That's right, Russian, that was the one I was missing too. I knew Mandarin and I believe Arabic and that might be it. That might be the six. Most common.
Think Korean also oftentimes. It just depends on communities. So, yeah. I think this is also, or Imagine Institute can be helpful, especially as we're thinking about access to providers and the work they've been doing in the technical assistance realm, especially as we think about language access. So they also would be a place in a space that might be able to give resource already in the early learning childcare space, just thinking about that.
I have another open-ended question that I'd like to ask you all. Using Nicole's presentation as a starting point, which again, is just updates on all the great work that's been done. Are there any specific FSKA initiatives that you would like to see supported in the next supplemental budget? Or I should say further supported?
If it's helpful, we can also bring up any portion of her presentation back for you guys. And I do see Michelle's question, does it have to be Survey Monkey? Microsoft Forms has a multilingual feature. I can look into if we, I mean, we use Microsoft Office, so I would imagine Microsoft Forms is something that we could also access. To be honest, I don't know for sure. We just typically in community engagement have used Survey Monkey, but I will look into that, Michelle. Eric, can you restate your question, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Are there any specific FSK initiatives that you would like to see further supported in the supplemental budget? Which of course will be the next session will be focused on the supplemental budget. Looking at supporting programs that are currently in operation. So, you know, looking at whether it's grant funding or dual language support, trauma-informed care. I mean, you know, there's just so, there was so much there. I wondered if maybe anything stood out that you'd like to see further support in that supplemental budget for? Yes, please, Senator Wilson.
Okay, I'm just gonna put myself right out here. Okay, I'm just gonna put myself right out here, um, because I'm gonna put out a wonder and you can tell me whether I'm like crazy or not. Um, but this last session, we had quite a, uh, quite a conversation around transitional kindergarten, which has come up in none of these conversations, which is just fine by me. Um, related to early learning and the concern of, um, really the impact that transitional kindergarten programs may have on the childcare and on the workforce. And, um, and we also know not everybody is eligible, right? For, uh, subsidy or for our state or federally funded programs. We also know that when we lose pre-K kids, we lose money because infants and toddlers do not, uh, come even close, um, to giving providers the cost of what it costs to really care for them, especially as we think about ratios. So as we move forward and as we're thinking transitional kindergarten and stuff, I'm just wondering, would somebody else besides myself be interested in moving ahead on, let's do something around the infant toddler space? Um, when we think about, so, when we think about rates and care so that we don't have this fight, um, which we should never have around, um, having kids be in a place and a space because it's the only way we can afford to run a program. And that's not how we live our world, and I know that. But it's sometimes it's starting to feel right now, we're in this place where money has become the issue, which should never be. And so while we're thinking about a mixed delivery system and while we're thinking about serving as many kids as we can, um, would it be, uh, an area to really dig in on and supplementally, at least to begin to, to start looking at increasing, um, the cost, um, for providers to care for that, um, you know, birth to three population, just a wonder.
Lucy Lewis?
Oh, Senator Wilson, I'm, I'm sitting here smiling because that just makes too much sense. But yes, yes, I think that that would be a wonderful idea. And you've been around, you've seen the shift. You remember when there was a time we worked fo- focused on infant from birth to three? And then it shifted again, and we keep shifting back and forth instead of looking at funding on the whole, um, uh, continuum from birth to, um, grade three or 12, depending on who you're talking to. So I would definitely love to be a part of that conversation.
You know, we have the cap gains tax. You know, we have the cap gains tax now, and that's going to bring in 500 million a year when we think about, um, additional investments. And so it's a time where we may have a, you know, resource which we've never had before. And now that that's been settled, you know, we can start thinking about these other things. And while we're looking at compensation, I just think that's a place where we could start really, um, just starting somewhere and, um, um, trying to increase again, the dollars coming in. So, um, okay, that was, if Lois says yes, then I know I'm headed the right direction. So, and we've done this when we went from full decay, part decay to full decay, when we went from, you know, all those things have been changes in our system that have impacted early learning, but we've been able to work through them. And I think this is another place and space where we can, um, do that. And now we have some resource.
I would add to that, um, in, incentives, um, and I can only speak on the, um, on the local level. Um, funding incentives, more opportunities and developing more opportunities for local school districts and early learning communities to communicate more from an educator perspective, but also on outreach and, um, in a collaborative form. So that what's already been alluded to, to educational and to, to communities that are serving families and children that really have families and children at the core of their values, um, are being supported to work alongside each other, um, for the similar goals, I think that they have. Um, and knowing that funding is also precarious in the K through 12 educational sector that there's, we're, we're really intentionally creating more opportunity, um, particularly at the local level for that type of collaboration. That I can only speak from my own, from just like in Snohomish, that we're really trying as this, as a coalition, we're really working. That's one of our goals is to, um, is to support that type of collaboration.
And Debbie, you referring to DCYF and OSPI, or did I?
Yes, DCYF and OSPI, but how that manifests also at the local level? How can the statewide entities encourage that local, um, collaboration? And dialogue there.
Between the school district and childcare, okay.
Right, I'm trying to bring in, I'm trying to bring in grounded, um, examples of what that looks like as well.
I put in the chat that inside Fair Start for Kids Act is a pot of money for ESD early learning coordinators that were doing just that cross-system sector work and also adding now in the transitional kindergarten coordinators that also are at the nine ESDs as, as conveners, if you will. And that was not, uh, I was not able to get that bucket funded this session, but that is coming back. Um, I'm gonna go for it again in the supplemental, just again, as we're adding transitional kindergarten to do exactly that, Debbie, and, uh, across the state in, um, the nine kind of regional areas that also serve our childcare providers, childcare aware and is in, um, seven out of the nine ESDs is within those, um, ESDs. And so the work makes sense and it really is that cross-system sector work. So, um, and so take a peek at that and we can talk more because there may be more we need to do, um, with that to support local programs.
Thank you, because I know our, our ESD coordinator has a very large area to cover. So we're really trying to work alongside her and, and support the work. Thank you.
I wonder how you guys would feel about maybe developing some survey questions together, um, with some of the time that we have left? If recommendations or questions come back up, we can always go back to that. Does anybody have any, um, initial ideas on the types of questions? I guess it, it will depend, I'm just thinking out loud here too. So I apologize if I'm hard to follow. Um, so some of the audiences that we're trying to reach are parents, some are providers. So I think the questions will probably depend on who the audience is. Uh, but are there any specific questions or ways to, to ask the questions that, that you guys have in mind? We're always happy to, you know, just like develop it on our end and send it out to you guys too for review, just keeping in mind that that also kind of elongates the timeline. Thanks, Senator Wilson. If there are any thoughts on that, we can definitely come up with some questions and, and share them. Um, just thought maybe with some of the, with the 45 minutes we have left, we might jump on that.
I have a question that's, but I've also been pondering, um, and maybe other, ELAC people might have an, some thoughts on this, but part of, part, one of the things that I've been thinking a lot about is capacity towards, towards leaders around the state that are doing this advocacy work and have the time to do this work, to really think from a systems perspective that's also on the ground, which I think many ELAC, um, uh, leaders are. But how are we supporting that infrastructure where there really is that local voice? That, um, and that people are getting compensated to be at these tables? I just don't, I think, yeah, I think I'll leave it at that. If people have thoughts, like what's be, like, how can that be more supported so that there are represent, representative voices of various different experiences really being at these decision-making tables?
Thank you, Debbie. Um, it's not, uh, directly related to FSK, but I think it might be a little, uh, related to your question. There is, um, the lived experience stipend, and is that what you were gonna say, Eric?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, you might want to take that over.
I was actually gonna ask if Erin was still there, if she wanted to maybe, maybe describe it a little further just so we don't get it, you know, confused. But if not, I can probably give a, a quick overview there. Um, we're looking at creating some guidelines and processes for, um, creating stipends for lived experiences. So we've been working with Department of Commerce, and there's a couple of other resources that, you know, has these opportunities out there. And I, I believe it's, um, one of DCYF's priorities in, in identifying this particular process and then making sure that we do just what you're describing, where we, we want to make sure that everyone has a seat at the table and, and those that are there are properly being compensated for that lived experience in bringing their voice to the conversation. So, um, yes, there's work being done, but in terms of specifics or timelines, I, I'm not real sure on that, but we could definitely follow up with that. That's something I think that we could come back to.
That's great. I, I saw that piece of legislation pass. So that's something that's funding, that's coming out of the Department of Commerce that entities can apply to.
Yep.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you bet.
Yeah, and Chelsea Thompson, who is on our community engagement team, has actually done a ton of work on that. So we can definitely get you some more information. Eric and I have been a little more distance from it. So I was like, I don't wanna, I don't want to say anything wrong, but Chelsea's very knowledgeable about it. So we'll connect with her and we can get you guys some info on that too. Because, yeah, that is very important. See some stuff in the chat. Thank you, Enrica. Well, I also don't want to, um, you know, keep you guys here till 12 if there aren't enough, if we, if we don't have, uh, enough to say right now, but willing to hold the space too, because, you know, I know that we don't have a ton of time for this, but I think on our team, we definitely have some action items that we can work on and some stuff to get you guys. Is there anything additional anybody wants to say? Any questions, any info you'd like us to track down? Okay, well then, maybe we can give you guys some of, some of your day back and we can get a jumpstart on looking into some of these action items. I'm still staring, sharing like your screen. Sharing. Well, thank you guys so much for your time. We really, really appreciate it. I know that you're constantly getting meeting requests and constantly being asked for your feedback and input, but we really appreciate you guys taking the time to, to do this work for children and families in Washington. Right, well, we will be sending out a follow-up email, um, either end of this week or early next week. Uh, and we'll start working on some of these things. Thank you guys so much. I hope you have a good rest of your week.